Six o'clock on my watch over here, Rick. Or Commissioner Chairman Rossler, I should say.
I have the same. Are we ready to get started?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to the May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N twenty-nine twenty. The public may only view the meeting online and not in the council chambers. Ms. Chow, would you call the role, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Aguilera is absent at this time. Commissioner Garretson?
Here.
Commissioner Hastings?
Here.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage? Just need to unmute yourself, Commissioner Savage. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, here.
Yes, thank you. And Student Commissioner Alexis Wolf, absent at this time. Thank you.
All right, very good. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our May fourth meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes, can we hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Hastings moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Mr. Garrettson, second.
Mr. Garrettson, second. So it's been moved and second to approve the minutes of May fourth. Ms. Chow, would you call the role, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Comis-- Vice Chairman Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage? And it passes six zero with Commissioner Aguilera still absent.
All right, very good. Next item is changes to the agenda. Ms. Chow? Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes tonight. Chairman Rossler?
Very good. We'll move on to oral communications. This is a time that the commission sets aside for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission, if you would hit the raise hand button and let Ms. Chow know you'd like to speak, she will call on you. Anyone wishing to be recognized, Ms. Chow?
Chairman Rossler, I'm not seeing anyone on the attendees list that has raised their hand at this point. So, and again, as Chairman Rossler mentioned, if you can raise your hand, if you're here to have any oral communications for items not on the agenda, this is the opportunity for you to do that right now. No hands up.
All right, very good. The next item is our public hearing for this evening. It's P twenty dash zero-two-five-nine, the sixth cycle of the Housing Element Update. Ms. Chow, I believe the staff report is yours?
Yes, that's true. And let me go ahead and share the screen here for the PowerPoint. So just a moment. And let me pull this up here. All right, can you see this okay at your end? All right. Okay, great. So, thank you again, Chairman Rossler, Commissioners. I'm Patty Chow. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development and City Planner. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present to you the Housing Element Update, the sixth cycle, which is project number twenty dash zero-two-five-eight. Just to give everyone a little bit of a background on this, because we've been working on this project, the sixth cycle Housing Element Update, since around April last year, two thousand and twenty. So essentially, we've, since that time, since the hiring of the consultant that's been part of our team helping us with this effort, we've had discussion sessions with the city council. The first one, which took place on November tenth, two thousand and twenty. Then we had a planning commission discussion that was on December the fifteenth. And later after that, in January, early this year, we had another city council discussion where we reviewed together the draft Housing Element. We've been keeping agencies, community stakeholders, organizations up to date on the process by having information available on the city's website under a Housing Element webpage and providing opportunities for comment and for folks to email us with any issues or comments that they're having based on the draft that's available to them at this point. So we've, again, we've received comments through the meetings, through emails. And we had, as you may recall, we had an online survey that was done last September, October, that was out for the public. And we've received eighty-five responses as part of that process. So all the mailing and e-blasting have been helpful in allowing us to obtain comments from the public on this effort. So at this point, I'd like to take the time to reintroduce the Housing Element team that's been working on this project. Of course, we start with John Conley, our Community Development Director, Engineering Director, who's part of the team. We have Michael Ressler, Principal Planner, who's been assisting me directly on a lot of these efforts related to the update of the Housing Element. We have Brenna Weatherby with RingCon Consultants, who you guys met before. And she's also here tonight. And we have Veronica Tan with Veronica Tan Planning. She's not, unfortunately, she's not here tonight. She had another conflict, but she's part of our team in this particular effort. So with that, going on to the next slide. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is basically we're seeking a recommendation from the planning commission so we can take that to the city council in order to approve and adopt the sixth cycle Housing Element. And we're looking right now at June twenty-second as the meeting date for the city council in order to have the adoption of the Housing Element. Subsequent to that, we will then be forwarding the adopted Housing Element to the State Department of Housing Community Development, who would then certify the element. And we would then be done with this particular effort, this project, until the next cycle comes up. So that's what's intended or the next steps in this process. As you all know, and some of you may be, a reminder that this particular Housing Element, it is one of the required seven state-mandated elements in our general plan with a main purpose is to provide assessment of both current and future housing needs in our community, to identify what the constraints are and opportunities for meeting the housing needs, and providing a strategy that basically is going to establish housing goals, the policies and programs for this eight-year cycle. As I mentioned already, the Housing Element must be reviewed by the State Department of Housing Community Development Department for compliance with state law and ensuring that we do have a compliant Housing Element in our general plan. So the objectives as part of the Housing Element, they are to provide adequate planning so that we have the ability to accommodate housing for all social economic segments of our community and being able to assist in development of affordable housing for low, moderate income households, looking at, trying to or looking at efforts to removing government barriers on the creation of affordable housing development throughout Vista. We're also, as one of the objectives, is to preserve and improve our existing stock of affordable housing, so maintaining what we have and improving what we have as well. And last but not least, making sure that there's equal housing opportunities for all in the community. The main components of the Housing Element, there's like four different areas that I just wanted to kind of go briefly over is everything starts with community profiles. So before we say anything, before we kind of dive into what programs we need, we have to have a good understanding of the demographics and what our housing stock looks like. So that's why we need to always have a good understanding of what the existing status quo conditions in our community, what they are. Then we look at what the constraints are and what is it that's preventing us possibly achieving these goals of, you know, programs and creating affordable housing in our community. And these constraints could be whether they're market-driven, it could be governmental-type constraints or environmental constraints that are in the process of reviewing projects to create housing in our community. The housing resources portion of the Housing Element is considering the one big element in all of this, which is the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is the allocation that's given to us as part of this whole effort and how we're going to meet these needs in terms of what resources we have and inventory that we have in our community. And so how we're planning to tackle that and meeting that particular allocation. And the housing plan, at the end of the Housing Element, you always notice that there is a housing plan comprised of five different areas. And in those areas, we have specific housing programs that help us or the community identify what are the particular actions and objectives that we're going to be taking in order to address the housing needs in our community and with specific timeframes and deadlines and action items so that it puts into place in actual, in motion, exactly what we need to do in order to be successful with, you know, implementing all these programs. So in terms of the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs that I mentioned earlier, just to compare to the last cycle, the fifth cycle in two thousand and thirteen, twenty-one, we had a total allocation of one thousand three hundred and seventy-four units. Our new allocation for twenty-one, twenty-nine is two thousand five hundred and sixty-one. So about, you know, doubling, kind of if you look at it simply, it's just that amount that we had before. The one thing that I just wanted to highlight here is the fact that our above moderate has grown quite a bit from what it was before in the last cycle. And that's due in part due to what's called an impaction correction, which is when we're looking at RENA numbers and the disbursement among the income categories, we're trying to use this, or the methodology is to try to get as close to the county's average in terms of the distribution of these particular income categories and units within these categories. So if we have a higher percentage of the lower income designated for lower income units, then we're going to get a lower percentage allocation so that there is more of an equal spread throughout the region so that not one single community is going to get the higher percentage of, having a higher percentage of lower income is going to get also a higher percentage of lower income units. So it's kind of making it more even spread throughout. And that's why you see that here and also the increase in the above moderate for our community, for Vista. Now, this table, you've seen this before, and I don't want to belabor this in terms of the numbers because there's a lot of numbers here. But in essence, out of this matrix, again, the top row is what we have been allocated through this effort for the, in terms of the RENA numbers, in terms of various income categories, arriving at the total of two thousand five hundred and sixty-one units. And then from those numbers, we have certain categories of, like for instance, the pending projects that we have in our pipeline, accessory dwelling units that we can count towards meeting these particular needs and numbers that are allocated to us by income category. And at the end of the day, we have a surplus at the very last row, where it's kind of this pink or salmon color. We have actually a surplus in terms of the very low, low and moderate income units that we can actually produce, that our units provided based on what's been allocated to us. But we do have a negative in the above moderate category, the negative one eighty-seven. However, that deficit is actually, it can be satisfied by the overage that you see in the other income categories, or I should say, in the moderate category, the two hundred and six. It will help us address that deficiency. So that's why there is the balancing at the end of the day in terms of how we're meeting all these numbers. In the next slide, we have, I just wanted to show again this map, which shows all the particular vacant sites throughout the city, the red areas that are identified throughout, the northern, south of the freeway, seventy-eight freeway, SR seventy-eight freeway. So it's kind of a distribution throughout the community in terms of our potential vacant sites that are available to address our allocation. The majority of the sites that we've identified in our inventory actually fall within the downtown Vista-specific plan in terms of vacant as well as underutilized sites. So you see the green areas that are vacant parcels as well as the yellow, kind of orangey, underutilized parcels throughout the downtown-specific planning area. And that's helping us achieve the allocation and meeting our needs. Now, this particular graphic shows, this map shows the planned, approved, impending projects that we have in the pipeline as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. So what that means is that we can actually count all of these projects, about five hundred and thirty-two units in total, that we can count towards meeting our RENA number as long as they're not constructed yet. Because the whole idea behind this is that within the eight-year cycle, that these projects will actually be built, be, will be available for actually being constructed within the eight-year cycle. And that's why we can actually count these towards meeting our RENA allocation. Back to the housing plan, which is what I mentioned earlier in my presentation. It's at the end of the Housing Element, but not less important. It's the meat of, you know, of the Housing Element. It's broken up into five parts. And it starts about maintenance and preservation of housing. And there are several programs that are listed in there that talk about how we can better maintain and preserve housing and affordable housing. So there is the mobile home park, a court agreement in terms of, you know, creating affordability or continuing to have the affordability with, throughout the community. The other area of the housing plan deals with housing opportunities and homeownerships. And it talks about maintaining, us maintaining a site's inventory or monitoring program so that we know exactly what we have in our community and how we are going to be continuing to address and keep track of affordable housing throughout the city. The other area that needs to be mentioned here is housing for vulnerable communities in terms of addressing our special needs population and obviously addressing homelessness prevention as part of that effort, creating supportive housing programs throughout the community. So those areas also are addressed as part of the housing plan. And there are several programs that actually, in fact, go into these particular areas. The other area is also removing constraints, which I mentioned briefly earlier, about constraints that possibly be creating some barriers for creation of housing and affordable housing. So there are some programs that can actually be implemented, such as accessory dwelling unit fee waiver, development fees, looking at expedited process or reviewing of projects according to SB three-thirty in order to help expedite and help create, you know, more housing, I guess, in a lesser timeframe or more expedited format. The Fair Housing Practices is another important component of the housing plan. And certainly, by doing community outreach, by doing a lot of the fair housing services, providing those to our Vista residents and property owners in the community, whether it's through help by Legal Aid Society, other types of programs that are actually outlined in the Fair Housing Practices, that's all part of the effort as well. Oops. And the one note that I've been mentioning, making a note of this throughout the previous meetings that we've had is that the good thing about all of this is that we don't need to have any kind of general plan amendment done or rezoned done in order to be able to accommodate the RENA allocation for the sixth cycle Housing Element. So that's a great, it's like a great win for us, for Vista, because we don't need to be concerned about that particular aspect, which creates a lot of concerns, I know, in the minds of the community members, decision-makers, as to what the consequences of that would be. Because right now, our general plan, our zoning map is basically set up to be able to accommodate our allocation. And that's the beauty of this one particular, you know, major note, I guess, that I'm making as part of this effort, that we don't need to be concerned about this. So that's a big win for Vista in that regard. In November last year, we did have meeting with HCD staff to talk about our sites. And since that time, we have had no concerns that were raised from HCD in terms of our site's inventory to the level that we needed to rethink the whole thing, you know, and start thinking about rezones or general plan amendments. So that has not occurred. So that's still good news for us at this point in time. I just wanted to mention that we're still working with HCD as far as comments that they're giving to us related to fair housing, which we're working on that. However, the balance of the document is in pretty good shape in terms of what we have provided to HCD for preliminary review at this point. So we're moving forward in addressing comments. And we feel pretty confident as to the status quo of the draft element at this point. So in terms of like steps and where we've been and where we are going next, the draft Housing Element has been reviewed, like I mentioned, by Planning Commission and City Council. It started in November, December last year, and January, at the beginning of this year. We've had meetings and several conversations with HCD staff in our draft Housing Elements since February throughout March. And we're continuing to have that discussions with HCD staff in terms of what I just said about the balance of the document. We're looking, honing in right now on fair housing. And we, tonight is the public hearing with the planning commission, where we're, again, we're seeking recommendation from the planning commission on the draft that we currently have in place. And we're, our goal is to get this to City Council in June, on June twenty-second specifically, because we do have deadline to adopt the Housing Element. So there is definitely a deadline that it's, that we have to consider and keep in mind the fact that we have up until one hundred and twenty days from April fifteenth, which would take us all the way to August thirteenth. But obviously, City Council is dark in July. And so we are wanting to make sure that we preserve our ability to keep our Housing Element on an eight-year cycle, but make sure that we have a timely adoption of our Housing Element. And that's why we're seeking a June twenty-second date to make sure that we preserve the eight-year cycle. That's really important for the city so that we can continue to do what we need to do within the timeframe that's allocated to us. So in summary, again, no general plan amendments or rezones are necessary as part of this effort to accommodate the RENA location that's been given to us. And the staff's recommendation is for the Planning Commission to recommend the approval of the negative declaration that's being prepared for the Housing Element, as well as to recommend to City Council the adoption of the twenty-one, twenty-nine Housing Element sixth cycle. And that pretty much concludes my presentation here. And I will go ahead and open it up for questions, Chairman Rossler, and also to the public and whatever, at this point, your wish would be at this point. So thank you very much for your attention.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Ms. Chow. Our process at this point will be for, to open it up to questions from the Commission of Staff and our consultants about the element. Once we've done that, I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak in the public hearing, hit the raise hand button so Ms. Chow can call on you. And then after hearing from everyone, we will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners and then make a decision. So we'll start off by calling on Chairman, or Commissioner Grimm. Did you have, Charlie, do you have any questions of staff?
I had, I had just a couple of questions. The first one is the fact that the RENA numbers are pretty much the ship that drives the Housing Element. And I know for years, there was a lot of consternation on the numbers. And my question, I guess it's just a general question. Well, in the past, there was a lot of consternation because the cities that had high property values didn't seem to appear to have to do much. With cities like Vista, a lot of the burden fell on Vista and similar cities. So my question is, I assume that the city, I don't want to use it comfortable, I assume the city is okay with the numbers that we have. And things maybe are a little smoother now in that area. I, you know, I guess it's kind of a generalized question, it's probably for John.
We went through the Sandag process to, you know, split up the RENA among all the cities. And there was a sub-group of elected officials that kind of drove that process, the planners and the staff at Sandag had input. And we, you know, we allocated the RENA based on transit and jobs, which is where the two primary criteria. But in the end, yeah, we got a number that we can accommodate with our zoning. Are we comfortable with it? No, we would like less, just like every other city, because it's, you know, a burden we have to carry and account for, for the next, forever, according to state law. But the two thousand five hundred and sixty-one units that we got we're okay with considering. We don't have to make any zoning changes. And so from that perspective, we're comfortable with what we were allocated.
Great, thank you. Second question is that in the text, it notes that the City of Vista has one of the lowest, lowest numbers in terms of development fees, and which is good, you know, low fees, you know, help development. I guess my question would be, do, are the fees that we charge enough to be able to fund the improvements that are needed, that are projected for those fees?
Patty, you want me to take that?
Yeah, well, I can start, I guess, and John chime in. We have had fee studies done and efforts done on that regard in terms of make sure that they're, you know, falling in parallel to what the improvements are, that we need to plan for in the future based on our general plan needs. And so in that regard, Commissioner Graham, they're in line with what we have to accommodate, in other words. So it's not like we've been, you know, ten, twenty years without updating our fees and not being parallel to that. So on that level, I think we're as good as we have been, you know, are realistic, I guess, with trying to meet the needs.
So there are periodic studies that figure out those projections, huh?
Right.
Yeah, we've done traffic and fire and sewer and trying to think of any others we've recently done. I think the only one that really probably needs to be updated is public facilities fees. But to be truthful, our fee, our development impact fees weigh much more heavily on large multifamily, commercial industrial development than they do on residential, single-family. The fees are fairly on the lower end for like someone that wants to build a single-family home compared to a large development. Might get hit with, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of traffic impact.
Great, thank you. That answers my question.
All right. Commissioner Hastings, any questions of staff?
It's always fascinating to read this stuff. So I was, I'm happy to have read all this information again. One of the things about the numbers, and this is a reflection more of being out in the population and hearing about, oh, all this development, every time I turn around, somebody's building a whole bunch of houses. And it seems to me that there's a possible disconnect between, and so I go in my little spiel that I have, but people aren't getting the message that this is a required for, by law, by the state, which is kind of a, you know, the boogeyman approach. And then just the sense that people need this housing. Then somehow, I feel like there's some, some gap in getting that message across about why this plan and why the increased housing. And I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of good suggestions right now, but I think it's important because I think that you guys do a fabulous job. And the houses get built and they get filled, right? But there, but there's some message there that's missing. So, another job for you.
Patty, you need to add that to the list of...
I wrote it down already, mentally and on paper. You couldn't see me looking down at my paper, but I did.
No, in response though to your comment, we recognize that education of the public is a big part of the state's obligation on us and the housing numbers. That's a huge issue, and we deal with that daily in our job. So definitely recognized.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Garretson, any questions of staff?
Yeah, I did, I just tell people that if they stop having kids, we wouldn't have the need for housing. I have a question, I have a question about accessory dwelling units. Roughly twenty percent of the growth will be in accessory dwelling units. Roughly twenty percent of the the growth will be in accessory dwelling units. I went through this a couple of times and, you know, I didn't necessarily read every page both times. But where will these ADUs be built? Where can they be built, obviously? Because when people hear no, no amendment to the general plan, no zone changes. You get a big sigh of relief until somebody starts building an ADU next door. And so I, you know, where where can they be built? I mean, it's my understanding, they can be built just about anyplace. In the whole city.
Yeah, we we're basically talking like single-family. Before it was more of a single-family zone approach where you're adding an accessory dwelling unit or a granny flat as most people know it. Uh but now even in multifamily zones, they can be added on, so. Legislation has quickly changed over the past, you know, recent years. Uh to help accommodate this need for more supply, more housing. So suddenly, you're right, Commissioner Garretson, and it's becoming more of the fact that it's now becoming more broad in nature as to where they can go. Um and as to the quantity, as to conversion of ADUs. Um even like a multifamily projects and converting garage, uh converting spaces that before were not seen as. Uh to be utilized for for as a habitable area. Um so it's it's actually gone into a different realm, I mean, as to uh ADUs being allowed. Um and and what used to be and what it is now, so, yep, so it's changed a lot.
Well, ADUs are great if I want to build one, but they're not so great when my neighbor builds one and.
Yep.
You know, takes up the all the spare parking in front of my house. So when my, when I have visitors, there's no place for them to park.
That's true.
So I I think we need to get, again, John, you can add this to the list, we get the word out. That these ADUs, you know, are are coming to every neighborhood just about, correct? Potential, as long as they have enough space and, you know, have the money to do it.
Yeah, I want to characterize though, the number of ADUs that we anticipate in the housing element is fairly low compared to the number of. Homes we have in the city. I think it's a couple, what is it, four hundred or some ADUs that we're anticipating and we have. Some like thirteen thousand residential units in the city, so it's a fairly small percentage, but it's based on what we're seeing. And yes, the state does permit it in single and multifamily zones, however. I don't think we're gonna see at this point a slew of them based on the permitting and construction costs that are involved. It's, it was a very popular venture for the last couple of years, but that's starting to change.
We saw what, sixty last year? And we're projecting roughly sixty a year.
Correct.
So we're not projecting necessarily a big upsurge in them, but um. You know, but it's, it it is what it is, but uh I I just want to. Bring it out in public that, you know, these things are coming to a lot of neighborhoods, people shouldn't be surprised. And on the other hand, people need to be aware, this is a great opportunity for a mother-in-law or. You know, kids or whatever too, so. Big part of this, as I was reading through this, that kept jumping up at me is, you know, A, the opportunity. And B, the problems with ADUs. Oh, I have one other, one other question in terms of uh transit. Being able to increase density close to transit, is that transit centers? Like where the, where the, where the train and the buses downtown, or is that. Close to any transit line? Transit's down Melrose, there's, you know, buses go down Melrose and they stop. Does that mean every area down Melrose can have increased density?
Well, a- again, we're not changing anything as far as our zoning map and general plan, we're not increasing density anywhere. What we have in the books as far as zoning and general plan is what we have. But but in in a, in trying to address your question, Commissioner Garretson, in terms of transit, when. When that's being uh talked about or mentioned, like for instance, density bonus. Uh or any legislation, we're really talking general, transit in general, so even bus stops. Um or it could be your your light rail or uh anything that's providing moldal transportation. You know, public transit, transportation that that's gonna be uh attractive as far as. Increasing opportunities for more or more dense development. Uh but again, emphasizing the fact that through this effort, we're not increasing density. Um anywhere as to zoning or general plan um is concerned.
But if you have a density bonus, you are increasing density. Whether you change the zone or you change the general plan, you're increasing density.
With a density bonus, for sure, yeah, no doubt.
I want to just clarify though that from a policy standpoint, when we talk about increasing density around transit. We're talking about the transit centers where the Sprinter stops, not bus stops throughout the city.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that was clarified. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, uh Commissioner Looney, any questions of staff?
Um yes, I have two or one question and then another comment. Patsy, is there a point within the city? When we issue permits for residential units? Where we have to issue permits for the very low and low living units? I mean, how um what's the requirement? I mean, will the government or will the state require the city of Vista? To issue permits for very low income units?
Um.
Or is this just a plan that um we're using as a guideline?
The plan, this is a plan, so it's basically. Much like the general plan, it's like planning for those eight years in terms of where the particular uh. Units can be accommodated, so whether it's very low, low, uh moderate or above moderate. Um identified units, where they can actually go in the city, so that we have a a good understanding. It's not just basically saying, oh, we can be anywhere in the city, so by zoning, by general plan. Uh by our sites inventory, we actually have identified sites uh where there's particular densities. Uh whether it's low density or high density project can be accommodated. So the whole point of trying to uh essentially when it happens or when these actually come to fruition. That's the other part of, you know, the the equation, I guess, as to when that will become reality. When a developer comes forward, a nonprofit developer comes forward and actually implements. What we envision for these areas in this eight-year cycle and where that will take place in reality. And then permits will go through the process, go through the whole um basically processing entitlement. Uh permits, building permits, grading permits, et cetera, but not up until that time, so this is really just setting. In place uh what we need to do in order to arrive at that final destination, which is the final arena numbers. But again, the state right now, which that may change in the future. Uh this is really more of a planning effort um as to where we can be in order to meet these numbers, but. They're not requiring us to have all these two thousand five hundred sixty-one units built by the end of the cycle, so. Hope that makes sense, i- it's not.
So this is basically. An allocation of certain properties for when the nonprofits do want to build. They can build on those parcels of land?
They can be able to identify or more easily identify sites in our part of our sites inventory where we've identified. These opportunities, I should say, so that it's not like they're, it's helping the community understand where these can go. And now whether that becomes reality by somebody actually coming forward and doing that, that that's another question, right?
Okay, that was, that was my.
So Don, in answer to your initial question though, there's no penalty for the city to not put in affordable units. We have to account for the zoning. We have to show we can account for them, but we have to build them. Or issue permits for them if someone else is not building a project with affordable units in it?
Okay.
Uh and if I can just add one thing to what John was saying is that the fact that, and back to the inventory is the fact that. When we identify these sites, uh there's what's called the no net loss, so we cannot just say, oh, well, we didn't. Provide the low and very low units of this particular area that we thought we would, so, oh, too bad, we tried. Uh it's not that easy, uh uh and or not that anymore anyways, or it used to be, but or, you know, pre- previous cycles, but. Now the fact is that there is this no net loss, so if we end up getting a developer that says, well, I cannot do the low, but I can do the moderate. Then we need to go find another site to replace that one. Um so it's not just a wash, like, oh, you know, we couldn't do it, so there you have it. No, it's not like that anymore, so I just wanted to point that out. So that's why we have to keep good track of our inventory um in part of our housing plan. And and the whole effort is is getting to be a lot more intense because there's. There's a lot of this that we have to keep in mind as we move forward, so it's not just the planning. Document to sit on the shelf where we're not doing anything with it, so I just wanted to kind of put that into perspective.
Okay, um one last question, and it's a broad question. And I heard today that the federal government is proposing. A policy where they will be allowed to build multi-unit housing. On any zone properties close to these transit systems. So it doesn't matter what it's owned or what the general plan is. Again, I just heard it, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but. That's gonna have a major impact, Gary, what you were saying. On our living units uh being placed. Pretty much wherever the government wants to put it, no matter what the zoning is. Have, Patsy, have you heard of any, any of that at all?
I've heard something actually just today and I don't know details of it, but I did hear something to that effect that what you just mentioned, Commissioner Looney. Uh it could be something that's actually in the works or nothing that obviously is concrete or probably. Up in, you know, legislative ranks of of being considered. But I have not seen details of it, so I can't really speak on that um on the details of that one, but I did hear something to what you just mentioned.
And again, that's, I just heard it today for the first time, it was very general, it didn't have any specifics. But if that does go through, it's gonna have a major impact, Gary, on on. On the appearance of our cities and on the general plan that each city has developed. Because it's almost as if we're gonna lose control over all the planning that the city has done um just to accommodate housing. That was all, um thank you, John, thank you, Patsy.
Okay. Commissioner Savage, any questions of staff?
Uh yeah, so um Patsy, in regards to um. Uh in regards to what you were saying about changing, if a developer comes in and can only offer moderate, we have to identify a new lot. What is that process gonna look like? Is that gonna be a big cost impact for the city? Do we have any fees associated? If they do move into one of these properties or is this, are these areas zoned for moderate? So the developer will just come in and be able to propose, what what does that really look like? I'm I'm sorry if I'm a little new to that.
Yeah, no, no, no problem, so so in essence. Um as I'm seeing it, based on, you know, knowledge of knowing how the no net losses. If they decide to propose something that is different than what was originally in uh expected to happen on a particular site that we identified. Um again, we have to have enough inventory and that's why it's important not to be hitting exactly the number as it was given to us. The two thousand five hundred sixty-one uh in terms of the allocation and that's where. Uh that kind of salmon-colored row on that matrix that I was mentioning that there's surplus. Um in in terms of the units that we have, so it allows us to have a little bit of a wiggle room, I guess, if you will. Uh so that we can move around if we need to, uh because if we are essentially targeting right on the money and right on the number. That's when we're gonna run into a problem uh by not having enough uh to be able to accommodate the circumstances. And I think our goal is to try to, you know, work with developers, the developer community, developing community. Uh and and trying to uh allocate it correctly so that we're not having to do this. You know, back and forth or moving things around, but but the surplus and the 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 ability to have flexibility with those numbers is. It's the key that's gonna allow us to, and keeping track of our inventory, obviously. Uh by having a good inventory, sites monitoring, all of that, mapping, et cetera, is gonna help us and it's gonna be very important. To help us, keep us on track, so that we don't have to do this, you know, dancing back and forth with sites and and trying to uh. Address the no net loss, so um I know easier said than done, but 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 cer- certainly I think is. The goal is to try to keep good tabs on it, so.
We, we also got a grant from H C D to have a G I S layer to track it.
So we'll be on top of that. Um so the other question that I had was regarding ADUs. Do we have any reasonable way to predict the the density of ADUs being constructed? Um based on income types or area types, you know, uh in the city? Um I don't know if that's been any consideration, but I'm sure that if a bunch of them start popping up in one area, uh we may have an issue. Um I'm not sure between construction and 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 an increase in density in an area. Especially if any home is able to, any home or multifamily is able to do it. Um is, has there been consideration of preventative measures we have for that, or is that kind of just? Or we're just crossing our fingers, hoping that doesn't happen, or what's the?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, I mean, the the whole accessory dwelling unit, the whole s- um. Understanding about accessory dwelling units and how it's come about in the past several years, it's changed so drastically. Um as I've seen it, and I'm sure, you know, my colleagues probably share some same, hopefully some similar ideas or concerns. The fact it's so hard to to track all of this because they're happening as legislation changes and it becomes a lot more. Or more or broader or more flexible in terms of allowing these. It it's really difficult to try to uh hone in on and trying to. With a crystal ball or trying to have a better understanding where these can actually go or or there's a big tendency, I guess, for them to be in. Um, single-family zones, multifamily zones, it's just, it's happening everywhere. I mean, at this point, I mean, we're we're seeing influx at the counter on a daily basis, on a weekly basis of plant checks and requests for. Sometimes things that we hadn't even thought of, you know, and then suddenly we were like dealing with. Uh interesting uh concepts of ADUs and things that are being done or proposed. So i- it's really tough, I think, at this point. I think it will probably be a time where. We have to see what the trends have been, like we looked at the last year or the last two years. Uh how that evolves over the next couple of years or so. A- and maybe then at that time, we might have a better way to uh, you know, track it in terms of like. Understanding a little better that it's in this particular geographic area of our community, but. I I think that that's gonna be hard to actually even predict at that point because, like I said, it's really happening everywhere. Uh where it can happen, I should say.
Yeah, well, yeah, that was my big question and it's good, good to hear that we're all just as lost as I am on that.
Yeah.
Um but okay, yeah, great, I mean, everything else was presented really well and I appreciate the staff. Um writing this out so well and making it so readable. Um it was pretty clear to read through and I think the the plan makes a whole lot of sense, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very good. Um. Patsy, I have just a a couple of questions for myself. Um in the um online index, uh we got eighty-five folks responding and only four. Folks responded in the Spanish side of it. Any thoughts on improving that in the future?
It it's, well, in the fifteen years that I've been here, I can speak on that. Um it's been difficult. I think we've tried and strive to do everything possible that we can. Um, you know, uh I'm a bilingual person, so I I know when I go to the counter and we explain and try to engage the community. From that angle, uh it's been, it's been, we've tried everything. I mean, uh that we can possibly think as a planner, I think, in trying to get the word out there. Um and certainly uh provide, whether it's an educational opportunity or materials or. In 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 different language formats or what have you. Uh and and I echo the same concern that you have, Chairman Russler, when I saw the number. I wish that it was a larger or 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 bigger turnout. Uh but um and I spent a great deal of effort uh with one of our staff, with Nixie Flores. Uh translating all of that, those questions into Spanish and and, you know, in the hopes that trying to make it, you know, uh. Accessible for everybody to be able to answer and reply, but there you have it. I mean, that's something we got in return, so I I don't have a good answer for you, but I I certainly can say that we have strived to. To uh to certainly get that participation in there uh with everything that we we can think of. to uh to certainly get that participation in there uh with everything that we we can think of, um, possibly.
Okay. Um, I thought the site inventory uh map and the tables were uh very interesting. Uh, it looks like you you have a a great handle on uh what lands available to uh to the development. I thought that was a a good effort. Um, any concerns about the carpenters' union uh attorney's letter? A fairly lengthy letter. I I tried to wade through most of it and a lot of attachments that and I I I think we're doing just as well as the City of Hayward. Um, any concerns uh about that?
We, uh, at this point, we are preparing response to the the comments that we received, which was the carpenters' union as well as the Caltrans letter. Uh, so we we are definitely trying to tackle all the points that they have. Uh, at this point, no, I don't have, and as staff, I don't think we have concerns uh as far as what the comments that were made. So we're just basically going through all the points and and make sure that we address all of them.
One of the points I wanted to make with respect to the carpenters' letter is a lot of their points were made uh relative to new housing that we could develop and the impacts from that new housing. It's important to note that that was all evaluated in our um general plan program E I R that was adopted in twenty twelve. And that was the baseline for all the existing general plan and zoning designations that are in place today, which we do not have to change to accommodate this housing. And so that's all been evaluated for the most part as part of the prior E I R. And the other remaining comments are gonna be addressed in the record uh when we go to the city council later in the year.
Very good. Super.
And and I can add also, Chairman Rossler, that I've been working with staff as well to evaluate those comments. And as Patsy said, um, there's nothing that substantively I've seen that I'd recommend um changes that would require recirculating as of an alternative document or looking at an E I R.
Okay, very good. Good to know. Um, I will now open the public hearing. If you wish to comment on the uh provide this planning commission with comments on the housing element, if you'll hit the the raised hand button, so Ms. Chow knows that you'd like to address the commission. Uh, you'll have three minutes to uh to the topic. Ms. Chow, anyone wishing to address the commission?
Yes, Chairman Rossler, I have a a list of folks here on the attendees list, so I'm gonna actually start from the top. Uh, and I'll call on your name, Joshua Marquardt. I hope I s- I said your last name correctly. You have your raised hand, so I'm gonna allow you to speak. Uh, and uh Chairman Rossler, if I may say so, the the we have allocated the three minutes per speaker.
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead, Joshua.
All right, thank you. Um, so I I I was curious to know a little bit more about the housing element in terms of whether or not there's any alignment with the twenty twelve Vista Energy roadmap or any marriage that's taken place in there for a plan to uh basically get more solar energy going. Uh, any analysis done in regard to what would be the average cost savings for a resident of a low-income home if they were to have solar energy versus simply being connected to San Diego Gas and Electric? Which is, as you guys know, one of the most expensive uh energy producers in the United States of America. If there's any analysis that's been done in terms of knowing what the average uh greenhouse gas emissions reduction would be if the city planning commission were to leverage their power in terms of requiring contractors to have a plan for renewable energy uh in some of their areas. And whether or not you guys have have looked at any of the uh low-income housing partners throughout Southern California that, for instance, in an organization called SOMA, S O M A H, they actually, for any low-income housing project that has eighty percent of the units at sixty percent uh market rate uh will often cover a hundred percent of the costs for renewable energy. What have, what is the planning commission doing in in that regard um to making the energy future for Vista better? In terms of having more renewable energy and keeping prices contained for those uh residents that, you know, are very low income and that are suffering?
Yeah, that, and I, if I can speak about, in terms, there's another effort, that's actually an ongoing effort right now. The the Climate Action Plan, you you might have heard of that, Joshua. Uh, that's actually an ongoing effort or has been already part of the city anyhow. And and in fact, there is an an upcoming workshop with the city council uh that's gonna take place on June first to talk about uh some of what you're talking about, renewable energies. And there's the Community Choice Energy effort in terms of uh electricity and and providing services to the community um and choices and and alternatives, I guess I should say, uh or less, hopefully less expensive or 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 other options that are available out there. But I I am not the expert on that. Um, I don't mean to sound that I am on that at all. Uh, so if you have specific uh questions for it, I know our director, John Collins, has been working on that effort. Uh, if that's something that is interest uh to you, and then certainly the workshop is gonna be coming up and and I would encourage you to participate on that and at least or learn more about it if you haven't already learned so.
Important to also note that the state law requires any new housing development to have solar energy installed on it.
Okay.
All right. Uh, thank you, Joshua. Uh, Ms. Chow, who's next?
Yes, I have uh next, Mary Jane Jagodinsky. So go ahead and allow you, uh, Mary Jane, go ahead.
Thank you, unmuting. Um, yes, I'm Mary Jane Jagodzinski, I'm Senior Vice President with Non-Profit Community Housing Works. Uh, we have under construction uh in the Arts and Culture District, uh Paseo Artist Village. We're looking forward to that. Um, I I I combed through the housing element. It seems like so many um uh you know, efforts that the city has done. It seems very comprehensive. It c- it covers uh all the cylinders. Uh, one thing COVID taught us, I think, is the name of who lives often in affordable housing. We've tried for many years to characterize, they are essential workers. That really, that, people understand who essential workers are, and that's pretty much who lives in our affordable multifamily. Um, I'm I'm glad you're also, you know, looking at special needs, et cetera. Uh, but in addition, um, that missing middle, people that are at the eighty to a hundred percent area median. That's very hard, because you can't really afford to build those those developments, market rate um developers. So that's just something to consider, the whole spectrum of people who um keep the economy of Vista going well. Um, just with regard to the the last um uh speaker. SOMA is actually a program of the California Energy Commission. It's a good rebate program, essentially. We have used it many times uh in order to add solar uh at at adding rebate, and we're a big proponent of that. So, thank you, and uh those are the only comments I had, but I did at least wanna appear and let you know we're we're weighing in on this. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Chow, who's next?
All right, so we have Dominic Maza, and I'll go ahead and go allow you to speak. Go ahead, Dominic. Uh, I just need to unmute uh yourself. And perhaps, no, okay, do not wanna speak. I uh think I lost the person here. Let me see here.
There's no other hands up.
So there's no other hands. And Joshua, let's see, you're still here. Kathy Bagwell, Lisa Turner, and Marvin Mizel, are you here? Do you wish to speak? If you wish to do that, you can raise your hand, or I can call on you to allow you to talk. If not, then, nope, nobody has raised their hand further than that, um, Chairman Rossler.
All right, uh, hearing that we have no one else, uh, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner Discussion. Uh, Commissioner Grimm, any comments?
Um, I just want to, I think it was Commissioner Savage that mentioned it, but I just wanna uh indicate what a good job I think staff did. Uh, housing home is a, is probably the toughest element or one of the toughest elements certainly
Yes.
to put together and 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 to, you know, try to provide some detail into it. So uh just kudos to staff and the uh the consulting team that worked on it. So that's really the only comments I had.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Hastings, comments?
I would just echo Commissioner Grimm. I thought it was a great job, thorough, conscientious. Easy to read, well, for what it was. So, thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, Commissioner Garrettson, comments for uh?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, a couple of things. You know, there's some incredible information here. And, you know, I don't know if there's ways we can make that mo- more accessible to the general public, but some of the graphs or the uh statistics and so forth in there are just incredible information. You know, who's the biggest employer and how many people do they employ and, you know, wages? And, you know, all kinds of great information in this report. So if anybody's listening, they should get a copy of that. What would happen if every one of these units were built between now and two thousand twenty-nine? What would the population of Vista be?
That is a great question.
What is the Sandag, it's like three point one persons sold or something is what the current rate's going. So what is that, a six? Twenty-five hundred times three, was it seventy-five hundred people?
Seventy, yeah, around the twenty.
Seventy-five hundred people a year?
Seventy-six.
Total.
Uh, totally, you'd have, if you're using the Sandag estimate of three point one persons per household, you're looking at around seventy-five hundred new residents in Vista.
So between twen- now and twenty twenty-nine, we'd go from a hundred and one to a hundred and eight.
Yeah, we would do that.
Okay, uh, tha- that's all I have. And again, um, I agree, Steph's done a great job in putting this together. And uh, even though it's four hundred and forty-eight pages, it was still great uh reading.
Sorry, yeah, I know, it was long. I think that's the most cre- trees I killed over my career.
It was digital, though, Patsy.
I know, it's true. Although I printed a version for me, so, but.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Looney, comments?
Um, just one comment for Johnny. Um, Johnny, as of um a year or so ago, the state policies or state mandate for the A D U's is up for reappointment or re-review in twenty twenty-five. So the A D U's was basically a five-year experiment to see how other cities, to see how the cities accepted that, and the state was kind of doing the same thing. But it's all gonna be reevaluated in twenty twenty-five. And Patsy, if that's been changed recently, please speak up. Um, of all the documents that I've read, um, that's what um the state's planning on doing.
I I had heard of, um, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I had heard about um some particular legislations that there was this, I don't know if I'm using the sun setting as the correct word here, is twenty twenty-five, but I did not hear particularly about the A D U one, so I I'm not versed on that one.
The the five-year um window is for S B three thirty, that's the Housing Crisis Act or whatever. And and it provides a bunch of allowances for developers, but the A D U's is not part of it. So the state law that went into effect last year is, it's in play forever unless the state changes it.
Uh, was it just S B three thirty? I think, yeah, that was the only one.
As far as I know, Amanda, was there something that you know of that was a window of limitation other than S B three thirty?
I I think it's limited to S B three thirty right now. In in practice, though, I, unless our housing crisis disappears by twenty twenty-five, I would imagine S B three thirty is going to be around a lot longer.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Commissioner Savage, any, any comments?
No, um, I just appreciate that, Don. Um, if any of you guys have, if I say anything that has some clarity outside of my context, I appreciate a little background on stuff, and thanks, staff, again. Um, appreciate all the help you guys have given me.
Very good. Um, when I first started my career as a planner in the early nineteen seventies, I was told that housing was one of the most complex issues that I would ever have to deal with. And I, I certainly think with all the information uh that's in this element, that it it shows how complex it is. And then the, and as Don was asking about earlier, we have to show that we have the opportunity to provide these units, but it's up to the marketplace to come and build them. And so we have to create an environment that's conducive to uh to meeting these goals. So uh again, I I echo the rest of the commissioners uh uh on the comments on how great the the element was, the amount of information that's in there is tremendous. And um I I think it's a excellent picture of what the city looks like. So uh, kudos again to staff and to the consultant team that uh that put it together. So that concludes our comment periods. If we're ready, commissioners, uh, we can entertain a motion uh on the element. Uh, would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Grimm?
Um, yeah, I'd like to move a staff recommendation on the housing element and on the environmental documents.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Grimm's move for, to recommend to the council that would, uh, they approve the housing element, negative declaration? Is there a second? Mr. Savage? Uh, Commissioner Savage uh seconds the motion, so we'll call for the question. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler, your vote, please.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
You have to unmute us.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And the motion passes six zero, Commissioner Gliram being absent. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. Congratulations to staff and the applicant uh team again. Um, we'll move on then to reports and comments from the commission members. Any, any reports or comments? Uh, Char- uh, Commissioner Grimm?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I thought, Rick, that your career started in the nineteen fifties.
Oh, boy.
I'd just been born. So, all right, having heard that, we'll move along to Mr. Conley's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we will have a meeting on the first of June, uh, planning commission meeting. It's also the same night as a city council special meeting on the Climate Action Plan and the Community Choice Energy. So I will bring that item back to the council or to the commission um to uh discuss it following the council's action. But because they have to review the C C E feasibility study, we're going to them first. Um, but there will be a meeting that night. It'll be a virtual meeting. We do have at least one item on the agenda for public hearing. Uh, I believe that's going to be our last virtual meeting, and we should be able to go into the chambers starting on June fifteenth. So I'll keep you posted on that, but that's the plan as of right now. The only other item I had was uh, we have a couple of discussion items coming to council on general plan amendment and zone changes. It looks like the next one will be um in early June for a property off Camino Largo in North Santa Fe. This uh was annexed back in twenty fourteen, I believe, with a a one-acre subdivision and the applicants or the owners coming back to the council to ask to get uh higher density to do a smaller lot, single-family uh project, so that'll be discussed on the eighth of June. Um, other than that, I don't have any updates, unless you have anything, Patsy, that I'm not hitting here.
No, I I think you covered it, John.
All right, if there are no other comments, uh, we will stand adjourn until June.
Rick, hold on. Just a question, have we heard anything back about the uh the motel and storage unit and so forth on uh Shadow Ridge?
Oh, it's Michael's project.
The hotel is not submitted anything yet. They told us they were gonna come in for building permits in the summer, and we're still waiting. The storage property looks like it um is not gonna come back, because uh he may have a deal with a a permitted use there.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good.
I also should let you know that, because I know I get a lot of questions about it, we're very, very close to issuing a permit for the we're very, very close to issuing a permit for the, um, gas station on East Fistaway in Warm winds to, uh, to redevelop and reopen. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that moving.
Excellent. Very good.
Did, did you say reopen?
Yeah, he's pulling a plan to remodel and reopen the station.
There is an existing old Shell station there that's been abandoned for far too long.
Long time.
So getting it redeveloped would be, uh, a, a great improvement to the northern part of our city.
Oogly, very oogly.
All right, any other comments before we close out? All right, saying none, uh, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Good job, guys.
Thank you.